I'm going to call a meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is the March 27th special meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, I'll read the compliance statement. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local newspapers on March 17, 18, '24 and '25, 2018. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable TV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through District's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in electronic age of computers, cell phones and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Please rise for the flag.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Kana?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
Ms. Takirian?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
And Mr. Cleffell?
Here.
Thank you. So, this is the special meeting of the Board of Education. This is the adoption of the budget. Of course, it always bears repeating every year, this is not when we approve the budget. This is the annual event where the administration presents to the Board its draft budget, and now it is ours for review, and we will be presenting it fuller, more fuller version to the public in a couple of weeks and then voting on it in early...
May 1.
May 1.
Right.
And there's no other business before the Board tonight, so it's just going to be the presentation at that point, so I'll just turn it over to our administration.
Yes, so, thank you for coming out to see the preliminary budget. Again, the preliminary budget is tentative District budget, where tonight the Board will consider approving it for submission. It's a draft budget and is subject to change, but we submit it into the Hudson County office for review. They not only look at our documentation that we submit electronically, but they also get various documents scanned over to them, and they do an extensive review. So, what is part of their review? The county review, they'll look at salaries and positions throughout the budget, they'll check reserves, they'll check appropriations as it relates to instructional materials, and they also will review our enrollment projections as part of the budget. The way we create the budget is, obviously, we state, it's just a cycle, so we start a new budget cycle at the beginning of this year, which is July 1. So, even though the 1718 budget was underway, we start building and, I guess, checking and making sure our base for the following, that year, is used to provide valid projections into the new year, which would be 1819. So, from the beginning of the summer, we make sure every salaried person is on the correct guide step and is in our financial system the correct way. In September, then, we double-check as the teachers are hired or rehired, that they're all in the right spot, if there's any movement between teachers, we make sure we capture that. That's all an ongoing process that we have through the year. So, we get to about December, we ask the principals to sit down and review non-salaried items in their existing budget, which was 1718, and then project into the 1819. Again, this is all done part of the process in System 3000, and then we're on this timeline. So, the mayor, I shouldn't say the mayor, excuse me, the governor has a budget address, and that's what we wait for, because that's basically, tells us how much revenue we potentially have for the 1819 budget. So, that happened around the 13th of March this year. The Governor Murphy came out and presented his budget to the legislature. They have about 48 hours to release the information, so they did that on the 15th of March, which allows us to really utilize the software, because they upload that into the software program that they utilize to build the budget, and they give us a physical notice that's online that we can go grab, and in other words, that would be what we call a state aid notice, and it'll tell you how certain categories of aid or aid is calculated. So, part of that, we run crazy, I'll say, because this year it was later than normal, so as we said, we waited, and we have a deadline since the type of district we are, so the 29th, we then submit it into the county office, so we have a couple of days to finalize everything and get everything to the county office. What I do want to remind everybody is, it is a tentative draft budget, so we really don't have any clearance to publish any information as it relates to this budget. Once the county office does approve it, then that's when we advertise, get a lot of this information out to general public at the public hearing, which is May 1, and it'll take action on May 8 at a regular meeting. So, as we create the budget, we had some budget highlights and really factors that we're concerned about through the timeline. First was, we want to make sure we cover all of our instructional and non-instructural staff members, so we make sure all the contracts are in and that we can cover the increase in any of the contracts or salaries from year to year. We're focused on health benefit costs as well. We know that they're pretty substantial increases as of the last couple of years, so we're expecting that information. We wanted to make sure we maintain our existing programs as it was restructured. We also knew that we had a pretty big growth in the elementary school level, so we wanted to make sure we were in a position to handle that increase in enrollment. So, we were looking at five full-time positions for teachers and then the aides for support areas as well. So, that was a big highlight that we, or I should say, a factor that we were bringing into the planning stage. We also were looking at a new security position and some related increases in resources, and then we wanted to continue to expand and utilize the District's instructional technology, continue to expand it as we've been slowly phasing it in the past couple of years. So, that'll bring me to the actual action tonight, so I'll read this into the public record. This is the resolution on for tonight, and it has to do with adoption of the preliminary budget. Whereas, the Superintendent and Business Administrator present to the Finance Committee and other members of the Hoboken Board of Education a recommended local tax levy of $45,829,191 to support the 2018-2019 general fund budget in the amount of $58,445,613, and whereas said proposed local tax levy increased by 4.5%, which includes cap adjustments of $718,200 for student enrollment increases, as well as a $362,272 adjustment for healthcare costs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the Hoboken Board of Education School Budget fiscal year 2018-19 attached heretofore as a tentative budget for the purpose of submitting said budget to the county office of Hudson, I'm sorry, to the Office of Hudson County Superintendent of Schools as required by law and code, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby directs the Board Secretary/school Business Administrator to cause said budget to be advertised in the newspaper and made available on a school district website as required, and be it further resolved that subsequent to the county superintendent's approval of said tentative budget, the Board will welcome community input at its regularly scheduled annual public budget hearing on May 1, 2018, and be it finally resolved that the Hoboken Board of Education will, after said public hearing, vote to formally adopt the proposed school district budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year at public meeting to be held on May 8, 2018. Again, this is, this action is to be adopted by the Board of Education at today's meeting, and that's what's under consideration. Supporting that resolution, the Board has an attachment, a support document, and I'll run down that quickly. General fund tax, again, this is going to be just a general overview of the whole budget, and this is something that we've been doing the last several years, and it kind of outlines some of the bigger portions of the District budget. The first, I'll start off with the general fund tax levy is $45,829,191. Fund balance, I'm sorry, oh, okay. Fund balance is $878,971. Tuition fees, $164,179. Rents and royalty, $507,449. Miscellaneous revenue, which is $229,325. That totals to a total local revenue of $47,609,115. State aid, which is formula aid, general fund aid, is $10,662,683. Federal aid unrestricted as well is $173,815, which totals the total general fund revenue, which is basically our operating budget of $58,445,613. In addition to our operating budget, there are other areas that we receive more restricted funds. The first area has to do with our preschool education program. We have a local contribution of $344,820, and then we have a preschool education state contribution, which is state aid for the Early Childhood Plan, and that's $12,499,475. So, altogether, that provides resources for a $12,844,295 program per se, that fits all in with both portions. We have a small amount of other local funds, which is $6,900. Non-public programs, which are restricted, which is basically the pass-through portion of the budget for non-public classifications of aid to parochial schools within Hudson, the city of Hoboken, is $650,522. Federal aid, which is restricted, it's IDA, NCLB, that is $1,637,028. So, the total budget, the total grand budget is $73,584,358. So, that is, concludes the revenue portion. Now, the second portion has to do with the appropriation side, which again, is to balance the revenue. Appropriations, current expenses, again, this is a breakdown of our operating budget. Current expenses, $47,557,123. Our charter school payment or transfer to charter schools is $9,733,116, and our capital outlay is $1,155,374, which equals that $58,445,613 number, again, our operating budget. And to balance out the total grand, total of the budget, has to do, again, with the restricted aid, total local aid, $6,900. Preschool education program, which is state and local, portions, $12,844,295. Non-public programs, the flow-through is $650,522, and federal programs, again, is $1,637,028. That's the resolution. You have a couple of other documents I'd just like to point out. You do have a budget key for appropriation types. That'll help with some of the pie charts tonight. It's something that we handed out last year, and people thought that was helpful, gives you a breakdown of the bigger ticket items by grouping, so it gives you a little sense of what that category of expenditure appropriation goes for. And the other item, which is, has been developed over a number of years, and it's all the questions and answers that you have for things that we have in front of us as it relates to tentative budget. We continue to add questions along the way, so if you have a question that you'd like to share with me or share as part of a general Q and A, just let me know. I think it's a little, it's exhausting, I mean, I think it touches on everything that the Board members may inquire about, and if, again, if there's something on there that, or something not on there that you'd like to, if it explained, we could do that as well. Also, we'd like to let everyone know that we do have that, as a general, for the general public again this year, we do have the email address that if someone from the general public would like to send in a question related to the budget, they could still send that to budgetquestions@hoboken.k12 nj.us. Okay, so, first pie chart is, I guess it answers the question where the funds go or how we spend the money. So, this is again, this is our operating budget, which is at $58 million and $58.4 million dollar number that we were talking about, and rather to go into every specific one, the highlights are, the biggest section of this budget is 26.50, which is our regular programs. Now, what we did, we wanted to get, this includes two portions, and I'll backtrack a little bit. This slide represents not only what they call general fund central office-type resources, it also includes school-based budget resources. So, last year was the first year we kind of added them together to get a whole picture of how the whole District looks on spending, not specifically with what they call a school-based budget transfer. So, when you see some of the information that comes out once it's approved by the county office, it won't quite look like this slide, but I'll be able to cover that in the budget hearing. But this is the way the submitted budget looks, this is where our money is classified. So, the first one was the regular programs, the second largest is the charter school transfer amount, which is, and forgive me, I have to have a light here because I think I'm going blind, 16.51 is the charter school transfer, and the third largest is the employee benefits, which is at 14.5%. Now, if you can see the green slice of the pie, I'll be getting into that in the next slide. That represents about a total, about a little over 12%, but there's a lot of little pieces that we can explain that next slide. So, if you follow from employee benefits to the left, you have a grouping from about 6% on down to about 3%, and includes special education, custodial services, and hopefully you can see most of it. Yeah, other services and instruction, which is mainly tuition, so that's all in between the 6 and the 3%. Everything below 3% is moving around clockwise up the left side. You have areas of support services, it was 2.6, required maintenance, 2.5, child study team, 2.6, student transportation, 2.4, and then school-sponsored athletics and co-curricular, which is at 2.28. So, that, again, that's all fund 15, which is school-based budget or general fund, and it includes salary and non-salaries. All right, here it goes to that other 12%, that little sliver from the prior. Again, the big, I guess, the high-ticket items on this slide is going to be capital projects, which is the first one, it's basically 2%. You have speech OTPT at 1.6%, and then you have clerical service and administrative at 1.48, and the fourth is educational media services, which is at 1.18. Now, everything that's under 1% is on the right side, and that includes improvement in instruction, which is 0.78, security, 0.68, other instructional programs, 0.45, care and upkeep of grounds, which is 0.2, instructional training, 0.15, food service at 0.08, and other entries, basically interests at 0.01. So, that was the appropriation side, so what we're going to do is just look, we're going to get into revenues in a minute, but this is more of a slide that's going to look at the resources, like sources of revenue, and then how it's used in the budgeting process in this particular budget. So, when you look at the resources, that's kind of like a source of funds, I'll say. So, we have an increase of tax levy of $1,971,980. You also have an increase in the general fund balance, that's an increase. So, we had anticipated that we may not get a full flat aid scenario, which we lost about $213,000 over the summer. We did think maybe we would get it back or be flat, or they would keep us at that reduced amount, which we lost at 213, so we had an additional money set aside to cover that out of the general fund. So, that's where surplus is helping that, we don't have to raise that in taxes. So, the next area is tuition increase, which is $83,455. Another source of funds is the reduction of the charter school payment from year to year. So, we still are going to be budgeting an increase over $550,000, increase in the charter school payments, but not as great as we had in this past year, because as you know, we had $976,000 unutilized for that off of their projections in the prior year. That will probably be part of our surplus planning this year. So, by shaving, I'll say the word shaving, reducing that amount, we were able to fund some of our other highlights and factors that we wanted to work into the budget. So, again, this is money that was available to us to pay for what we wanted in the budget. State aid decrease, that's a net difference. It really has to do with that loss of $213,000. It's net against extraordinary aid, which we received a little bit of, a little bit of an increase in extraordinary aid, so we'll be budgeting for. And then, other revenue decrease, which is basically decreases from miscellaneous income and impact aid, so we'll lose some there. Now, how does that, how was all that used in the budget on appropriation, appropriation side on some level to pay for some of what we wanted to do this year? Like I said earlier tonight, the new staff, which will cover kindergarten teachers and aides, that's about $589,850, so we're able to get that into the budget, new security resources in the amount of $55,000. We have a new lease purchase agreement that'll provide funds for student technology, both Chromebook cards, LED, whiteboards and some infrastructure, and that'll be for $128,825. Increase in other lease purchases that we've done over time the last couple of years, it's $572,276, so that's some of the increase in the sort of cover, the million four that we had and the 450 ground lease that we had for the field turf project, and then also includes some of the projects we ran for the summer. That's what that area is. That left us with about $1,003,000 to cover all contractual salary and benefit increases. All right, so, we'll have the picture of the revenue now, which again, is part of, not part of the resources, but it offsets the appropriation side, and again, it has to do with our picture just for the general fund operating budget. So, the local tax levy is at $45,829,191. Some of these numbers are repeated, but I just want to give you a whole breakdown of the actual amount, it's found in the budget. The tuition, which is student tuition, is $164,179. Rent, which is to, is for our own facilities that we rent out to Creekay providers, as well as some facility usage fees, that's coming in at $507,449. Miscellaneous revenue, which really is interest on account balances, some E-rate income that is income for eligible technology, hardware, software and related services, as well as some various refunds, that's coming in at $229,325. State aid unrestricted, which is that formula aid that we talked about, that we're told about in our aid notice, and extraordinary aid, which is a classification of aid that we received notice of, June and July of each year telling us how much we receive for special ed eligible reimbursements. That's known as extraordinary aid, so it's $10,662,683. Federal aid has to do with impact aid and semi. A semi is also another way the District can recoup some of the expenses as it relates to eligible special education costs, and that comes in at $173,815. And then, finally, the budgeted fund balance, which again, is the amount that we had budgeted last year plus about 200, it actually is $639,281 that we had budgeted last year. Again, these are resources that go to hold, to offset taxes and not having to raise these taxes in this budget, 1819. So, it's the $639 plus the new $239,690, which we set aside again for what we thought we'd lose in state aid. And that'll bring us to a quick pie chart, which is a little easier pie chart than the one that we, the ones that we looked at. Revenue projections, obviously, the biggest portion of our, is the local tax levy, which is the 78%, and the second largest is state aid at $10 million, that's about 18.24%. Now, again, this tax levy also supports, as I stated when we went through the resolution, the support documentation has to do, it does go towards the charter school transfer payment, so that's inclusive, as far as offset. And I'll switch there, and Dr. Johnson, if you'd like to take it from here.
All right, so, what I'm going to do is just give you an overview of some of the budget highlights, so in other words, what are the educational initiatives and programs that are being funded by the recommended budget here? So, overall and holistically, it's really important to know that this budget does in fact cover the cost of additional staffing that we need for increased enrollment. To give you just a little bit of information, we are in fact increasing our sections at the elementary school levels, particularly at kindergarten, we are at a minimum going up four kindergarten sections, so we are opening right now, or we're operating, considering operating 20 kindergarten sections where we have 16 this year. We believe 20 will be enough, it is possible, it may not be enough. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had some new kindergarten enrollments that seem to be steadily coming in, so that's something that's important to know. In addition to that, as you know, as cohorts of kids move through the elementary school, based on sections and based on size, it does require some shifts. So, what we are seeing holistically is a smaller sixth grade cohort leaving our elementary schools and making their way to the middle school with larger cohorts behind it. So, we are actually going to see all of our elementary schools with many more sections than we're running and operating this year, with next year's middle school sections a little bit smaller. So, what does that actually mean? It just means that we look at our staffing a little bit differently, and individuals are shifted based on certifications and ability to teach at either the middle school level, upper elementary school level, et cetera. So, but this budget does in fact support the addition of staffing to accommodate the increased enrollment. This budget also includes the continuation of Project Lead the Way, and you will see at the high school level, one of the things when we get to the high school level is that while we're operating Project Lead the Way to its fullest extent, the extension of Project Lead the Way is that we are actually looking at the foundational pathway classes at the high school level for biomedical sciences, computer science and engineering as required courses, so that all students are exposed to it. We looked at our data at the meeting not long ago in terms of the diversity report, and one of the things that we saw was that our computer science program was not in fact attracting a core number of students, underrepresented students in that particular area, so we decided to simply expose all kids to it. So, we're rolling So we're rolling it out by starting with the engineering program being a required course in September of two thousand and eighteen for all freshmen entering the high school. And the following year, it'll be the computer science course, and so on and so forth. So that's something that we're actually really excited about. Another important element to discuss from an educational standpoint is that as a lot of districts are struggling to balance budgets and to maintain programs, the first thing that a lot of times will, will actually be taken out of the budget or removed are courses or even programs that are, that fall within the fine and performing arts. As a school district, I think we can all say, and what our administration is presenting to you, is a budget that supports and is committed to the fine and performing arts. So we are not in any way, shape, or form reducing any of our related arts, and in fact, we're, we're actually expanding it. So I'll tell you a little bit more about how we're doing, how we're doing that. You will see an interdisciplinary pilot program on the slide behind me for the Connors Elementary School, and that interdisciplinary pilot program, you'll hear more about in the next upcoming weeks. But we are working with an arts, a nonprofit arts group to pilot a program in Connors that integrates social studies curriculum with the fine and performing arts, as well as physical education, into a double block period that children would get five days a week. And if it works well, the structure of this program has great potential for all of our elementary schools, because it increases bodies in motion time, physical education, on a weekly basis. It also takes the social studies curriculum, and it integrates it as the content driver for the related arts. So things will be taught through a multitude of art mediums with social studies driving the content. So we're really excited about that, and I'll provide you more information as we go forward. The high school's personal growth period is something that has become very popular. The kids are really getting excited about all of the different opportunities. So this budget supports the continuation of things like the Princeton Review SAT prep program that we offer during the day at no cost to parents. It also supports things like online courses, any kind of dual enrollment or online collegiate courses. It also supports the cost for any assembly programs that would take place during the personal growth period. And the idea is that everything that happens during that period, we are trying to kind of diversify and expand the opportunities for kids. So we, we have dedicated some resources for that particular program. Our Passport to Learning after-school program at the elementary and middle school levels, we are still committed to that program, it's not going anywhere. We're continuously looking to improve upon it and add new courses to the mix of those programs as well. Along with our summer theater and music programs, we are also looking this year, and will be releasing information after spring break, to add some sports camps in the evening for our students, and also some wraparound enrichment programs around the weeks of the theater and music camp, but then also a summer enrichment program for the first couple of weeks of August to keep families involved and engaged. They are for a cost, however, at the same time, we will tier those costs like we do Passport to Learning, so that our families with some economic challenges will not be taxed by, by the cost of the programs and will be allowed to participate, that's for sure. This budget also supports our extended school year program that we have every year at the Wallace Elementary School, and for programs that we hope, new programs, to embed into the extended school year program. It also supports co-curricular programs and RTI support instruction. So I'm really happy to report to everybody that we not only have RTI reading instructors in all of our schools, but we also have added math instructors as a result of our student achievement. We understand that math is an area that we need to focus on, so we do have math instructors in response to intervention programming at the elementary school level. The RTI program is expanding not necessarily in bodies, but it's expanding in the sense that we are providing many of our staff members with complete Orton-Gillingham reading training, which is extremely, extremely powerful. It's a multi-sensory reading program, and for a large number of staff members, including our RTI teachers, to have that particular training is, is very powerful. In addition, I believe the Board of Education may have seen at the last meeting the dual enrollment courses through NJIT. We are committed to ensure that our students can take those dual enrollment courses and not have any economic hurdles for actually taking them. So we are embedding them into the high school program of studies as well. And then lastly, we remain committed to the Gifted and Talented programming, not only at the elementary and the middle school level through Johns Hopkins, as well as the giftedandtalented.com. But we are also, and I think you see this on many of the agendas, we're also expanding the concept of gifted and talented opportunities to students, well-deserved students at the high school level that are participating in a number of pre-college programs. We have a few students this summer that have been accepted to different programs around the country, and we will continue to encourage them to, to do that as well. So at the high school level, just to break it down quickly, we have some new courses in our program of studies that I'm very excited about. We have a Black History and Experience in America course, as well as a Latino History and Experience in America course. We are adding AP Computer Science, we have our dual enrollment courses as well, and we just recently added those Project Lead the Way requirements to our program of studies as well. So these courses are a really nice kind of complement to a program of studies that we overhauled last year already with many, many new courses. So, and we will continue to look at our program of studies and update it. And just, one of the things that's really important is that you as board members understand that anytime we propose a new course, we propose that new course because we believe our students would truly benefit and also be interested in learning in that particular area. So for example, we had two new courses that we implemented this year. One was People Who Have Changed the World, and the other was a Twenty-First Century Cultural Literacy program. And both of them are very successful and very popular, so your approval of the budget supports those courses that are being rolled out. We will continue during the professional, the personal growth period to add support for our students. Our math lab at the high school during the PGP period is packed, to the point where desks have to be brought in. We now are looking for additional instructors during that math support time. So that's something that we are going to look to add. Athletic expansion, we are not committed right now to talk about what programs we would actually expand at the high school level, but I do want the board to know that we are required to do periodic surveys for the purpose of Title IX compliance, and we do continue to do that. So the athletic programs that we add are added for a very particular reason, and that is that students are telling us they are interested in those particular programs. So we are at a point right now where we have some winter, some needs in the winter, in terms of potentially adding some, some athletic options. And in addition, I'm going to hold off on the field trip experiences, because we'll touch on that at the elementary and middle school level as well. Our Advanced Placement Institute continues, so the AP Computer Science course is just added to our Advanced Placement bank of courses. And we've said this before, and I'll say it again, at Hoboken High School, our students are offered an array of Advanced Placement courses. We do not have testing criteria into those classes. We encourage any student that wants to challenge him herself to take those classes, so we do not have barriers to Advanced Placement courses whatsoever. The only thing we do have is what is required by the College Board, and that is particular prerequisites. So in other words, if there's a particular math class and there's two prerequisites prior to it, the students do have to complete those. But at any time, if a student would like to enter an Advanced Placement course, the Guidance Council helps that student, engages the parent in conversation, and by all means, we want that child to, to challenge him or herself. In addition, we are also continuing with our Virtual School Lab, and that Virtual School Lab helps us accommodate those students who are in need of and want an individualized approach during the school day, which means that they may take a number of classes in person, they may take one or two classes online, a mixed approach. And one of the great things about Hoboken High School, particularly because of its size and also our openness to meeting the needs of each and every student, we make sure that we accommodate whatever it is that that child needs during the school day. And sometimes it's a traditional nine-period day, and sometimes it's a nine-period day that works out as a bit of a hybrid approach. And some of those periods are for collegiate purposes, and sometimes those periods are for exploration in areas of angels for kids. So that's what's happening at the high school level. At the middle school level, some of the exciting things that this budget does in fact support, as you know, we are almost at the end of the planning phase for the outdoor activity park behind the Demarest School, as well as the indoor living classroom. So both of those will be part of and supported, soft costs in particular, to make those two spaces, educational spaces, a reality for the middle school. So we're really excited about that. April eleventh, the students from Stevens University will be presenting their final projects, and every one of you will get an invitation from the students to attend the presentation, the video presentations. We are also at the middle school level supporting mathematics professional development. In this year's budget, the Board of Education supported the overhaul of the upper elementary and middle school math program, and we are looking to do a year or two of professional development. You've already supported the purchasing of the textbooks and the materials, et cetera. We are looking to expand our literacy program and the core novels. We do that consistently at the high school level, at the middle school level, and the elementary. And the middle school is actually the driver and the leader in, in the concept of our core novel program, so we're going to continue to expand that. We are looking at the middle school level to also expand our support, our response to intervention support in the areas of math and English language arts. I'll hold the field trip experiences till I get to the elementary school. We are also going to be adding in the STEAM block of the middle school program some unique experiences. We're actually going to be reaching out to local businesses and corporations to be a part of that STEAM block experience. And one organization that has agreed to partner with us is a company called Codenum in town, and they're already working and providing scholarships to our high school students in the area of coding. And they actually came to see us last week and thought, you know what, high school is great, but we need to start capturing kids for this intensive coding concept a little bit earlier, so we're going to be integrating it into the middle school level. And it's a great way also to bring the local businesses and corporations in Hoboken into our schools, and to connect our kids with some of those companies outside of school as well. Also, at the middle school level, we are going to be increasing some of our programs through Passport to Learning. As you know, this year, we did try to roll out Passport to Learning with a new name called Explorations, thinking that the kids wanted might really appreciate something new. But the fact is, believe it or not, in two short years, they just want it to be called Passport to Learning, because that's what they're used to. So one of the students, when the Explorations program was called over the loudspeaker, one of the students was still sitting there, and as he was walking in the hall, he said, you know, why aren't you going down to Explorations? And he was like, I don't know, I forgot, I was waiting for them to say Passport to Learning. He was used to that. So we are actually going back to Passport to Learning, but we are going to keep the middle school structure and just expand some of the offerings for the middle school students. We've taken their input and some of their ideas about what they would really like to participate in, and we will integrate that into the after-school program. Right now, the intramural sports are working extremely well, and the middle school students are loving swimming. We have many students that are going to the high school right now for intramural swim from the middle school, and they're really, really enjoying themselves, so. Okay, at the elementary school level, to kind of round it out, as you know, we overhauled math at the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, as well as purchasing new materials at the high school level for this particular year. Now it's time to overhaul our mathematics program at the K to four level, so that we have a continuum that makes most sense. So we are going to be doing that this summer, and this budget supports the overhaul of textbooks. We do have the Orton-Gillingham multi-sensory reading training, and I also think it's important for the Board of Education to know that we are not only training our RTI instructors, but we're also training special education teachers, and we're also training select kindergarten first and second grade teachers as well, who would benefit from that Orton-Gillingham training in the regular classroom as well. We're expanding the core novels at the elementary school as well. At Brant School, as you know, and we'll make it official, for those who don't know, Brant currently is operating a kindergarten first and second grade program. Next year, they will be operating kindergarten first, second, and third grade. And each year, they will increase a grade level, so, so that they will then become consistent with the other elementary schools in town as our enrollment continues to grow. Our fifth and sixth grade advanced mathematics program will not only continue, but it will also expand to all of our schools as well. We're at a point now where we have students that will qualify for the advanced mathematics program in each of our elementary schools, so we're, we're excited about that. Our school-wide enrichment program is in the works right now. Mr. Delafave, bless you. Mr. Delafave, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and Mr. Fitzhugh, our Assistant Superintendent, are working on the development of the curriculum for the school-wide enrichment program that will be tied to the Challenge and Support program as well. Passport to Learning after-school, we are expanding it in terms of the courses, just like at the middle school level, but I also thought it would be important to know that we are in the process right now of designing the, the framework to break our Passport to Learning program into two components, an enrichment component, which would be the traditional Passport to Learning, as well as a Passport to Wellness segment that would include intramural-like activities and sport skill development at earlier grades than middle school, so that we can actually begin to address some family needs that way as well. And finally, in terms of the Passport to Learning program, we are also working to ensure that all children that participate in the Passport to Learning program have all of their needs met in that particular venue after school. So if there's any kind of assistive technology that's needed in the after-school, if there's any kind of specialized training for staff members, we just want to make sure that no child is excluded from the after-school program if there are specialized needs that we're able to meet during the day, but have been having some difficulty meeting after school as a result of staffing. So we're being creative, and we're reaching out to some groups, and also our paraprofessionals have been extremely supportive of, of that program as well. And finally, the one that I kept kind of pushing off are the And finally, the one that I kept kind of pushing off are the field trip experiences. We, with our field trips, we have a very specific protocol that sometimes at the building level, particularly at the elementary school level, sometimes gets overlapped or lost in contributions to programs by our agencies, our PTOs, or even the Ed Foundation. That's obviously all wonderful because those are donations that are coming in to actually help facilitate our field trip programs. When that doesn't happen, we are right now reiterating and making sure that in the budget, we are supporting the fact that our field trip programs that are part of our curriculum are covered for students, and that they are financially covered by this particular budget. So we are in the process of ensuring that protocols are in place and that all of the schools understand what those protocols are. But this budget ensures that field trips that are tied directly to curricular learning are covered by the budget. So that is something that I think is really important and has created a little bit of confusion for some parents along the way. So with that being said, we'll clarify that and ensure that moving forward, there's a consistent approach for it. So those are the kind of things that are covered by the 2018, 2019 budget. And if anyone has any questions regarding any educational initiatives or curricular initiatives or any kind of new programs, by all means, we'll talk about it in our upcoming committee meetings, or you can ask after the presentation is over as well. I'd be happy to answer.
Does that conclude the report?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Well, thank you. So board members have any comments or questions at this time?
No.
I think we'll be mulling over all of this the next few months, so.
Right. And then what will happen, as we've done in years past, is Mr. Moffett is, will contact board members, will schedule several small group meetings for non-quorum meetings with board members in small group meetings to go over the budget, ask questions, get comfortable with it, poke around. It's big and complex.
And there's that email again, if somebody?
It's Budget Questions with an S at hoboken.k12 nj.us.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Rico, would you do me a favor? And do we have any public speakers?
There's no one up yet.
Nobody's up, thank you. In that event, we can move forward on the voting to adopt this budget. Everybody ready? Mr. Moffett, you want to call a roll?
Was it motioned in a second?
I'm sorry.
I'll motion.
Second.
In a second. Sure. Call roll. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
No, just a wait a minute.
Okay, all right. No other public comments? Then our business is done for today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting adjourned.